At the end of the study session, we'll talk about why that timing is important as it does relate to action that the city of Pasco is scheduled to take on our plan in May. And today, what we are going to go over with you is we're going to continue the discussion around the capacity calculations which for which the board gave direction four weeks ago. We'll then move into the meat of the capital facilities plan, and I will turn it over to Denise, who will be able to walk you through the different components of the plan. And then, as I said, we'll talk about the next steps.
Assistant Superintendent Thorne, if I could just interject, we've designated approximately an hour for this conversation. And then Assistant Superintendent, should time permit, would like about a 30 minutes of the board's time for boundary parameters to just as an awareness. It can be slightly flexible, but if it could work that way, that would be ideal.
Okay.
Sorry, Sarah. Thank you.
Absolutely. So we'll start with the with the capacity calculations. When Dr. Reyes and Mr. Nunamaker brought these to the board four weeks ago in study session, there was a lot of conversation around the different models that we could use, with the idea being that the goal was to achieve some consistent measure that we could articulate to the public and rely on moving forward. And the direction around the models that the board gave to us was that we were to use the weighted class size average for non-high-poverty schools, excuse me, at elementary, middle, and high school. And so that is what these summary tables reflect, that we applied the that capacity calculation to our existing classrooms and determined that these were then the building capacities at those levels. For purposes of the capital facilities plan, we will or have incorporated into the draft these capacity numbers that also include the number of portable classrooms at each site and what the portable capacity is so that we can show what our overall capacity is at those buildings as currently configured. Are there any questions or comments about these numbers? We did, these are going to look just slightly different than, or these are the elementary, and then these are the secondary numbers. We did go back, there was a slight error in the Chihuahua calculation, the difference of about 82 students. And so we've corrected that, but that number's going to look different in your materials than than what it does here in the PowerPoint. It's been updated.
Could you tell us how the usage factor was applied? Is it included in the building capacity number?
Sure, the scheduling factor. Yeah, the scheduling factors are applied across both the portable numbers and the building capacity numbers, because it's the the scheduling factors that capture the amount of time, the estimated amount of time those classrooms need to be used for planning purposes in the buildings. And so it is the estimated number of planning minutes divided by the estimated number of instructional minutes. And it's and it varies for the different levels.
So would that mean that, like on McLaughlin, where it says building capacity is 863, that has the scheduling factor in there?
Correct.
If in period one, no teachers had the period off, and they were all teaching at the same time, the number would be higher for for capacity. Okay. Thank you.
So I do have a question on these. So we see these numbers up here, we would expect them not to change from year to year. So we should be able to go back, and I would like, in the interest of transparency, to see these numbers and the calculation of these numbers somewhere on the website. An inventory of each school, the classrooms, what they're designated, and then the formula that we use to arrive at these numbers. Because I think that's important information. For guys like me who are interested in the details, I think that's that's critical.
Yeah. And I believe that Dr. Reyes and Mr. Nunamaker, do you have those those detailed calculations to be able to provide you that backup? We simply didn't do it for this presentation because it's a different focus.
I think I think when we do put it up, we, I think it'd be good also to have, instead of just calling it capacity, to have a row that's called, because you use design capacity on the front page, call it design capacity. And for McLaughlin, if it's 1,200, put design capacity 1,200 and call, or however we're going to delineate here, but call this number here, including scheduling factor, usage factor, service factor, whatever it is, so that it doesn't look like that's the actual design capacity that you calculated. We need both rows, I think.
Yeah, and I think that when we get into the discussion on the capital facilities plan, we're defining our educational program standards, so it might be nice to use the same language, because that's basically what you're talking about, Mr. Lerman.
Can you go back to the elementary slide?
Sure.
So this, you may not have this off the top of your head, but I would like this, if someone could look this up, maybe in the next half hour, the October 1, 2016 enrollment for the elementary level? I'd love to see that number. I don't expect you to know that off the top of your head, but if we can look that up, okay, I know we have it somewhere, I just couldn't pinpoint it easily real quick.
Yeah, and do keep in mind, and and we should be more clear, I think, when we do, if we publish these capacity charts, this enrollment is not the FTE enrollment, it is the headcount.
Actual headcount.
Actual, so if we have a partial FTE, we still have to house that complete student in a room. So that's going to look a little different than what's reported by OSPI.
I mean, this is just a presentation thing, but I wouldn't mind, you know, you have your actual enrollment in that yellow. I wouldn't mind highlighting the building capacity the same way, because that's our goal as a district, to get to that building capacity. And I think that would kind of highlight that, rather than saying we're relying on these other things to get to this total capacity, just for potential purposes.
Absolutely. We can certainly do that. Are there any other questions on the capacity numbers? In in looking at these, it was based on the board's direction four weeks ago that we developed these calculations. And then we went ahead and incorporated them into the capital facilities plan work, because we needed to to have those inputs for the formula that Denise is going to speak to you about in just a moment. I think that down the road, should there, the board wish to have further conversation about what this looks like as a final product, I, you know, there's there's certainly room to do that. We would ask, though, that if there are any other comments or changes that the board wants to see in how we reach these numbers for purposes of the capital facilities plan, we would need that direction tonight, because we need to bring you a final product in two weeks.
How does district staff and people who are doing these plans feel about these numbers? Do we feel like these numbers, that really, logistically, we can put more kids in than these, so they're not really accurate? Or do you feel pretty good about these numbers? I mean, I know, I know, it's like a crop shoot, going from here to here, trying to find it, and we are just landing on what we feel is appropriate. How does the staff feel about this?
So I can speak, I'll speak for myself, and then if anybody else wants to wants to chime in about how they feel. I look at these numbers, Amy, as numbers for planning purposes. And so from a standpoint of trying to paint a picture of what what program do we want to deliver for our kids moving forward in the future, and how can we plan for that? I feel good about these numbers, that they actually capture what it is that we want to plan for and move towards. You know, do these numbers capture the number of kids that we can physically stuff into a building? No. But that's not what this is for, if that makes sense.
Thank you. No, I really appreciate that opinion.
Can you tell us what the scheduling factors are for elementary, middle, and high school?
Oh, I did not bring.
Is it, is it zero for elementary school?
It's like.
They're 88%.
Eighty-eight for elementary and 76 for middle. Wait, no.
I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a factor applied to elementary school?
Yes.
Eighty-eight percent.
Seventy-six for middle and something else for high school.
I think 77 for high school. 75 for high school. If we want to come back to this, we can, but my intention at this point would be to turn it over to Denise to get into the details of the actual capital facilities plan for your comments and questions, so.
Okay, so let's go ahead and jump in. I know that, I believe you all have had a draft of the plan, so what we'll try to do now is just kind of walk through that and break it down into pieces. And, you know, just the background of why we're talking about this is, as you know, in 2011, the district adopted its first capital facilities plan, and that was on the recommendation of the community summit. The city of Pasco in 2012 adopted a school impact fee ordinance, and pursuant to that ordinance, you update your plan and your impact fees every two years. So the last update was in 2016, and now we're on the 2018 update. And really, what is required under the Growth Management Act for a capital facilities plan is the identification of your program, your standard of service for your, the delivery of education. And so that's the first component we talk, we'll talk about, and it relates to what Sarah just was walking you through. Then there's the capital facilities inventory, basically everything that you own in your district, and putting that down so that everyone knows what you have. We look at the enrollment projections over the six-year planning period, and then we also compare that with your existing capacity to determine whether or not you need to think about capacity to serve growth. And that's when we get into then the financing plan. To the extent you have identified capacity needs, which you have in this district, we set forth in the financing plan how you intend to pay for those over the six years. And then that leads us directly into the discussion about the school impact fee calculation. You'll see school impact fees and mitigation fees. Just to break it down in really simple terms, school impact fees are in the city of Pasco under their ordinance. SEPA mitigation fees are what we seek in Franklin County, because they have not adopted a school impact fee ordinance. And so through their environmental review process, we go through a comment period to try to get mitigation for schools. But essentially, we rely upon the same formula to for purposes of demonstrating the need. Again, just kind of going through the authorization, fundamental authority for why you collect these fees, they're charged one time for new residential development only, not charged on commercial development. But they're intended to help pay for the school facilities needed to serve the students who will reside in those new homes. In order to establish a basis for collecting those fees, you need to have the six-year plan that demonstrates your need. And then you have the same need established for your SEPA mitigation fees. So just kind of going through the underlying authority, you have your capital facilities plan adopted by the district. Then that capital facilities plan is included in the city and eventually, hopefully, the county's comprehensive plan. They adopt it by reference as a part of their capital facilities element, and that's the basis for the city or the county being able to collect fees on behalf of the school Most of this I've already talked about, but what I will just really quickly go over is that you can't charge impact fees to pay the total costs of the capacity that you need for new development. There has to be a mix of funding, and frankly, the primary source, our bond revenue. So that's one component. You also have a 10-year period from the date of collection in order to spend those fees, and so that's all a part of your planning processes, looking forward over what now is a six-year period, but to determine what are we going to need cumulatively to serve new students from development. And then finally, again, in order to spend impact fees on capacity projects, they need to be adopted within your capital facilities plan. So stepping back and reflecting on what Sarah just talked about is the program standard component. And what this really is doing is, for your for your planning purposes, it's looking at your buildings and identifying everything that's going on in those buildings, the regular classroom use, the scheduling factor that applies to that use, the areas of the building that are used for special programs, like special education, computer labs, things of that nature, and determining, based upon all of those considerations, for a regular classroom purpose, how many students can we serve in this building? And so you, as you know, you went through a long exercise to determine for planning purposes what that means in your district. And just really quickly, this is what we have folded in based upon that planning exercise for your adopted level of service program standards. Then we look at the capital facilities inventory. We look at what's going on today in your district, what your buildings are, how, what the capacity based upon the program standards in those buildings are, how many portables you have at each site, what the portable capacity is. We think about the impact of the early learning center, and how by that opening, it freed up some additional space at the K6 level. We also look at your support facilities and any plans you have related to those facilities, because they are a part of your capital facilities inventory, and then at your existing land inventory. So all of that is cataloged and captured as a part of your capital facilities plan.
Can you go back to the slide, that one right there? What was our baseline starting point for our high school calculations before usage factors and special, special classrooms? Was it 25 per grade, or was it 30?
Yeah, the weighted average.
The 25?
The weighted average.
Based on Initiative 1351, which, from my understanding, what we're saying here, it's, it's not, it's not implemented right now. Okay. Is there any other requirement we have, other than the contract average of 30 at this point? That's the only, okay. All right, thank you.
And the question I have is around, and I might have, anyway, is around that pre-K, because we weren't able to procure the site, the places, student placements that we had wanted, or the placements that we had promised from the money that was given to us from, from the state funding for that. Did we take into account that those really need to be reserved for pre-K sites and not so that, anyway, just so that we don't, we're not affecting those numbers?
I'm going to look to Sarah for that question.
Are we talking about in the, any pre-K in the actual those?
Yes, the E cap placement.
That is not figured into the capacity calculations?
But we freed up, with that pre-K center, we freed up some of the places, but I know that we had to at least increase by 25%, and we need to make sure that we increase our pre-K capacity by 25%. We weren't quite there, but that was probably the state of Washington's fault, because they didn't give us the E caps places, even though we had room to put those pre-K. I just want to make sure that if we still have to have a couple of pre-K in the elementary schools, that we're not figuring those classroom sites for for general education, K through 12, when we still have an obligation that we need to fulfill with.
Sure. And we're not looking at any, is in the actual usage versus the capacity calculation of the facility? So what we're trying to do with the capacity calculations is find a standard measure of a number, and then how a building is actually used is going to depend on a variety of factors. So it's going to depend on whether we're housing a pre-K classroom here, or if we have a number of specialized programs that where we're actually putting fewer kids in the room than than it.
Okay, great.
Which numbers did we, did we use the same numbers across the district for elementary, or did we break it into high-poverty and non-high-poverty?
We used the non-high-poverty average.
Okay. And then for high school, middle school, I think what I saw is all of our schools are considered high-poverty. None of them are considered non-poverty, but we selected that number.
And that, that was based on direction from our recollection of, no, it was based on direction from the board at our last study session around using non-high-poverty, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I was stumming there.
Okay, so what this chart, what this chart shows is if we, you know, just look at today, what is going on in your school district, in your schools, based upon your current enrollment? And you'll see that currently, and when we, we're doing this, looking at building capacity, but also looking at total capacity with the portables that are currently at each grade level, and comparing that to existing October 2017 enrollment. And so you'll see at the elementary level, right now, you have a need for 508 seats to serve students pursuant to your program standards. At the middle school level, you have an excess of about 638 seats. And then at the high school level, you have a need for 739 seats. So again, this is what is going on today in in your district. One thing I want to point out is that when we're talking about the capital facilities plan and looking over the six-year planning period, we tend to focus forward, but one thing not to forget is that these numbers also include impacts of recent growth, so growth that has occurred in the past couple of years, that while it's not new growth occurring tomorrow, it's new growth that has recently occurred.
I have a question. I thought we discussed not counting portables, so then that makes a dramatic difference. The needed capacity would, for elementary, would be around 3,000.
That, that is true. Without those portables, there is a much larger capacity. I think the way to frame this discussion is to think of planning the six-year period and beyond that with future project planning, to think about what does our capacity planning look like in terms of getting to all of our students in permanent space eventually? And so at the present time, thinking about the 2017 bond projects, and we'll go through some charts of where that gets you in 2023, we are including portables for purposes of that near-term capacity solution, but always with the context of the long-term capacity solution is moving those portables out of the district.
But it's not calculated in your calculation of impact fees?
It's not, no. And I'll walk through that. That's, that's a good clarification. So what's happened in your district, you probably well know, you've grown by more than 2,000 students in the, since 2012. The district's enrollment projections, which were prepared by MGT America, show that you will continue to grow over the six-year planning period, and really actually beyond that period. But by 2023, they are projecting about 3,000 new students in the district, and that's going to affect all grade levels. So you'll see on this chart that the, the 3,000 figure comes up as you get to 2023. You'll see it starts to tail off a little bit beyond that, so not as rapid of a rise in growth, but still continued growth, which fits within your district's longer-term planning picture for purposes of facilities. So this chart, similar to what we just looked at, is looking at enrollment in 2023, and this is assuming that you've done nothing, that you haven't built any new capacity at all in your district. And so what this shows us is, if nothing is done in 2023, based upon enrollment projections, you would have a need at the elementary level of about 2,100 new seats. You still would have available capacity at the middle school level, and keep in mind, this is with portables included, and you would have the same continuing need at the high school level of the 1,839 seats, or same continuing need, but has grown. So again, this is if you have done nothing since from today till 2023. So that's where we start to look at, what are you going to do? You've identified that you're growing, and that over the six-year period, you will need new capacity to serve new students from growth. So we look at your capital, your capital projects, which are all told by the bond that you passed in 2017, which includes not only capacity projects, but also improvements to existing facilities. So we have two new elementary schools, one new middle school, the replacement and expansion of Stevens Middle School, portable adjustments and acquisition, land acquisition, and again, that's a part of that future beyond six-year planning, safety and health improvements across the district, and then also transportation and maintenance improvements. And what's important for us when we're thinking about the impact fee formula is, what do you have here in terms of growth-related new capacity projects? And you have here essentially your, your first three bullets. They are all new capacity projects that can be built to serve students and provide new seats. So that tells us between your projected growth and your planning for new capacity, that you have established the baseline for school impact fees.
So I don't think we talked about acquisition, though, of new portables in the bond. The, the fourth bullet, I mean, we've talked as a board, I thought the majority of us have talked about adjustments at this time, but maybe I'm wrong. Just, we haven't talked about acquiring anymore in the recent past.
Yeah, I think it's fine that's in the, in the discussion, but I had the same thought. I don't, I will never approve another portable being bought. We have over 200 portables right now, and I think they should slowly be retired as they outlive their use, and I would never support any more purchasing of portables.
Why would we need more portables when we are eliminating a lot of the need at especially our elementary schools? And why can't we pre-purpose some of those portables to places that they need to go, rather than re-buying new portables?
That's certainly, and we can make this adjustment, because your current portable inventory, and by moving them to different grade levels as may be needed, will cover your capacity needs. So we can certainly work on making that adjustment in terms of eliminating acquisition.
Sorry, we, we're clear with the board direction around acquisition. So, yeah, there's no, there's no intention to change and or modify the direction or the operational expectations that we very clearly have heard from the board. Our goal is, is the same as yours, and that's to continue to move toward being able to provide adequate educational service for our kids in brick-and-mortar classrooms. So we can take off the word acquisition.
Okay, so just kind of going through kind of the summary of what we just talked about, based upon your enrollment, based upon your bond projects at the elementary and the middle school level, you're going to add about 2,235 new seats. So K8 is going to see quite a few new seats coming in. And again, we will, and just kind of looking, looking past acquisition here, but we also have that ability to move and relocate portables across the district as may be needed for that temporary use while you're continuing your long-term planning. But between just the new permanent seats, you have met and exceeded the new seats that you need to serve the projected growth. So you see that 1,859 number is what at the K8 level you need in order to serve the new students who are projected to be enrolled.
I think that whole second bullet would go away, not, no additional capacity.
So this is just the summary of all of that in terms of, this is what things look like today, plus the new permanent capacity that you will have built by 2023. And then this shows in the far column, the needs that still exist as of that date. And you'll see that where that need is, is at the middle school level. But that need is satisfied, because you will have excess portable capacity at the elementary level for those portables to be relocated during the time that you're planning for additional permanent capacity at the middle school level. So what this shows is that, kind of similar to the previous chart, is that that is that that need to find at least 1859 seats is satisfied by your construction of more than 2,200 new permanent seats. Now, keep in mind, because there's there's nothing in the 2017 for a high school project, it doesn't mean that you're not planning for for addressing that particular project. That's just part of the future planning that we do talk about in the capital facilities plan, and we do identify in the financing plan. So I just want to make sure that we didn't completely ignore the high school. So I'm just going to pause here if anyone has any questions on this chart.
I'm running another bond.
So what did that show? That we'd be like 1,000, 1,200 students over capacity by 2023, including portables, if we if we reallocate? Is that what it's showing?
Yes, because presumably you would move some of the portables that are currently at the elementary level to the middle school level, but you still would have available capacity between those two.
But at the high school?
The high school, you still have the existing capacity need, though some of the portables at the elementary could be moved then to the high school level as well to alleviate that. So the next component of the capital facilities is the finance plan. And this is how you show your work in terms of how you're going to pay for your planned projects. We look at anticipated funding sources here. We know you have the 2017 bond funds. We have potential impact fees and also expected state school construction assistance funds. The new capacity projects really form the core of the impact fee calculation, and I'll walk you through that a little bit more. But really what the finance plan shows is that you are documenting how you are fulfilling the need that you've identified. So this is the financing plan, and this is what is exactly included in the capital facilities plan. And it shows under the first set of projects, the 2017 bond projects. And you'll see that it shows all of the different funding sources. It also shows impact mitigation fees. It does not identify a specific amount because that is based upon what new development pays. And then the bottom half are the future projects, which is again a part of your long-term capacity planning solution, not currently funded, not part of the 2017 bond, but on the radar for purposes of providing additional brick and mortar classroom space.
So earlier you mentioned that future projects that we would use impact fees for have to be mentioned on the plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if it's not listed down there, then we can't use impact fees for it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'd like to add a lot of things to that list then because we've never reviewed that type of list. And so and so I didn't under, you know, I don't think we understood that because I would like to add lots of things to that if it's going to mean that if it's not on that list, we couldn't do it with impact fees.
So let me, let me also explain that for you to use impact fees for purposes of this six years, whatever is on the list has to be, has to be anticipated to come online by 2023. So so any items that are on the top of the list, I think we definitely should add if you think there are, and they have to be capacity-related, so not maintenance and operation-related, not curing existing deficiencies, but new capacity-related. So those are the only two components. But we certainly should be expansive in terms of what might be a new capacity project that will is anticipated to be in place by 2023.
Well, I would love it if we had another, a smaller high school, a Delta-like high school. I'd love to add that to it, and I would put that, I would put all of those things ahead of replacing two schools because we're just not in a position to do that. I'm perfectly fine if someday we can do that, but we're in no position to replace a school that's functioning unless it's not safe before we add a lot more capacity. So that's one thing I would add. There could be others.
So I'm looking at this list, and we've got portables, 460 on the top.
Yes, so.
Is that planned?
So let me, let me speak to that a little bit. So when you move a portable from one site to another, if you are moving it to serve new capacity, the costs of moving that portable can be impact fee funded. So that is what that line item is intended to address.
Okay, but it's not new capacity?
It is, it is being moved to the location to serve new capacity. Because in its present location, it is not able to serve the intended new capacity.
I think I understand that part, but what happens is, so if you go back to where we're over on the elementary side, are we over 460? Is that is that where that number comes from? Where does that 460 come from?
No, I think that's the potential that we could add. And I think the way they have it is listed so that you could do either one. That could be new capacity, which we've said we don't want, but or repurposing. And that would be the number of rooms that we could add if we did purchase new ones. But we've, we said we don't want to do that, but maybe someone in four years would want to. I don't know.
So help me understand where that number comes from. Why is it 460 and not 350?
So I'm going to look to staff because the number came from your finance plan.
Sure, and it was, we calculated the number based on what the maximum estimate was between the levels because we weren't sure.
So can you go back a couple of slides till we get back to our, all right, right?
That one right there.
830, so we have excess capacity at the elementary level of 830. And that 460 is going to come from that 830.
Actually, so it maybe it will help to look at the the 454 number because that is where at the middle school level you would need more seats. And so you would be moving from the.
I'm not, I don't care where it's going. I care where it's come from. That's that's the, we're saying 460. And so, but this, this is not moving any portables. This is portables where they're at, right?
Correct.
So we will have a deficit of 460 at the, at the middle school level. So what you're saying then, that number is we're going to repurpose, is that where that comes from? Is 460, we're, we're taking them from and placing them here? And it becomes new capacity, but we don't show the deficit. We don't take 460 from the elementary level.
We would definitely need to do that should that occur. So yeah, this is just to show, and and you'll see it says without portable adjustments for that purpose.
I think to me that it's so frustrating because to me you have to count, you know, this makes it look so much nicer than it really is. You know, that's why I wanted it to be off of building capacity because the numbers just painted much dramatically different picture. Because the fact is, our portable students, they don't just live independently in a portable. They have to access the building capacity. And so, so when we discuss the capacity and the effect on their education and the student experience, it has a dramatic effect on that, and yet we're not counting that or considering that. And to me, that's my biggest frustration because it just paints a dramatically different picture when you look at the numbers. And so that's what's frustrating to me because when I looked at, and I know you're going to get to the impact fee calculation, I was like, what? It it makes no sense to me because, but again, it's because now I realize you were not counting or we're counting the portables as capacity, which I thought we had a long discussion explaining why we should not do that because those students are still there, they're still in the building. And so to act like they don't exist is just really, doesn't paint the right picture and give us the right numbers. So it's really frustrating to me to to not, because I mean, I just, I'm just adding. So when I look at the elementary school, I'd say, well, no, we don't have an excess of 830, we're still deficient 1,600. Because those kids are all still going into the school, they're going into the cafeteria, they're going into the gym, they're on the playground. And we've actually taken away space from their playground by adding portables to their school. And so it's having a dramatic impact on those students. And we're talking about impact here of further growth, and the impact is dramatic. And to me, instead of an excess of 830, we're really still deficient 1,600.
I think, I think we all understand that. We're all frustrated.
Well, no, no, I know, but I mean, people that look at it may not know that. We know that because we're talking about it. But if someone just looks at this or looks at the final product, they don't realize that that's what we're saying.
But I think we need to get through this calculation. It will help us get a little better idea of why we've included those in there.
Okay, so. This one?
Yeah. So. So, but this is talking about, this is the bond that we're on now, this top part, right?
Correct.
But we're talking about those portable classrooms, and that's, is that, and you're talking about 2023, that's what.
So the 2023 figure is the end of the six-year planning period. So that's why I keep talking about those. But what is going to drive towards the 2023 year are the 2017 bond projects. And and I should add that, you know, you will update this in two years. And so your picture can be supplemented at that time. So to the extent you have more definitive planning for the future bond projects, those would then be incorporated at that point.
You know, I think, I have a couple of questions. One is the new elementary school and the new middle school don't have any state match. Currently, do we not qualify for state match for those two things? Or is it just not calculated because it's further out?
They do have state match.
Excuse me, new elementary school number 18, new middle school number five, sorry.
Anticipating that we would not at that point in time qualify for state match.
Okay. The other question I have is, I don't know, I mean, I have all this paperwork. We're going to have 6,380 or whatever, 34, 24 students at the high school. Anyway, that's like 3,000 people at each high school, leaving, you know, rising slightly bigger than it is now. I'm sure you're aware of that. That was just a shocker to me. We cannot put 3,000. I mean, we've done it before at Pasco, and it was something of a nightmare. So so we're excited to see how you're going to deal with that because that, to me, is like our biggest nightmare right now.
So that's really, that's really a question for the board to start thinking about in terms of that. I mean, I think what this capital facilities plan does is it, it really frames that for you in terms of what the future looks like. And so as you start planning for those, for that future bond and those future capacity improvements, how you, what direction as a board you want to go, I think, is really what this plan will inform.
The other thing that was quite interesting that was in, under the replaced Livingston and McGee, we are getting far more than a 50% match on that project. I mean, we have to pay 13.6 million, and we get 20.4 million from that project. Is that correct? We get.
So those are very rough estimates, number one, but that's the rate that we would be anticipating because those would be new and new in the way that we're getting higher match level for Stevens. That new and new calculation is different, and so that would be a way to maximize state match.
So it's, that, to me, that's a lot more, I mean, that's a much bigger state match, and we still get another 200 students out of it. So, you know, even though, yeah, I want to get, get some of these, that's a, that's a really small price for an elementary school getting 200 more kids out of it and maybe reducing some of the need. Anyway, it's a great price for those schools.
Okay, so let's dive into the school impact fee calculation. So just a refresher for you all. It's the, the formula used to calculate the school impact fees is based upon a standard formula that's consistent with the requirements of state law. It is used by all of the districts that collect school impact fees in the state of Washington. It's also adopted as a part of the city's ordinance. What we do in terms of inputs is we use your growth-related projects. And when we get to the formula, I'll explain this more. We're not using all of them. We are using representative projects at each grade level because what we're trying to determine is a cost per seat for the impact at that grade level. So we could be using, for example, both elementary projects, total cost, total capacity, but we would get to the same cost per unit by just using one project with one capacity set. Importantly, under the state law, the impact fee has to reflect the proportionate share of a new residential dwelling unit's impact. And the way that we get there primarily is through what's called a student generation rate. And this is based upon the last six-year window of actual development within the district matched with student enrollment. So it shows us how many students on average are coming out of each new single-family home and how many students on average are coming out of each multifamily unit. So that student generation rate really drives the fee. Importantly, the fee formula provides credits. One is the credit that you'll get for any state assistance dollars that will be applied towards the project. The other, the other is an estimated tax payment credit that a new homeowner will pay towards the same improvement. So that, so the bond payments that they will be making through their taxes will be credited to them, so they're not paying twice. When we get to that bottom line, then automatically pursuant to the city ordinance, the fee is discounted by 25%. And then in the past, this board has decided to apply an additional discretionary adjustment to the fee. And those are the figures that you see there on the page. So I know it's small, but essentially this is the formula in action. And you'll see that, as we've discussed, you have identified in your capital facilities plan that by 2023, you will have new elementary and new middle school capacity. So those are the the projects that we are using for purposes of calculating the fee. Again, we're not including all of the projects, but all of the projects are eligible to be funded by impact fees. But we're using the representative projects for purposes of determining that per dwelling unit impact. And so you'll see that once we have applied, without applying any credits to build a new dwelling unit, the elementary and middle school capacity that it needs, it comes out to around 10,600 per unit, and this is for single family. Then we apply those credits, state match dollars, tax payment credits, and the unfunded need is just over $7,500. Then we apply that 25% reduction per the city ordinance. It gets to a fee of just over $57,000. And then consistent with where you were in 2016, the fee bottom line is the 4,700. So, and then a similar exercise with the multifamily fee. And you'll see how that generates down to the bottom line fee of just over $4,500.
That last adjustment that that the school board makes to make it 4,700, when that was originally enacted or adopted by a school board five, six years ago before all but probably one of us were on the board, was that an actual percentage or was that just? We did all this, we did all this hard math, sharpened our pencils to four decimal points, and then we got to back then $6,000 or $5,000, and then we made it 4,700 because that's what the city would accept at the time? Or was it based on a real percentage back then?
The bottom line fee, as I understand that, Scott, was, was, and that applies that discretionary ordinance.
So all this math doesn't really mean a lot with the environment we're in right now.
The math is.
We're coming up with numbers based on what the city will agree to. But it wouldn't have mattered if that number came out to $10,000 is the final number before 4,700 or $6,000 or $5,200, then the final number was going to be 4,700. There's a, it's not a, it's not based on any research or any numbers for the final school board adjustment at this time.
So I think if you're asking if we have, if the district has gone over to the city and renegotiated, the answer is no. This, this was, this was, as I understand it, as I understand what you said, this was a, this was an amount that was probably agreed upon. I mean, all the numbers above are justification for charging impact fees.
I think she answered, she answered my question. All I was saying was back before any of us were on the board, when they came up with 4,700, they did all this same math and some, some number before 4,700 came up. But it really wouldn't have mattered what that number was. The agreed-upon number was going to be 4,700.
I disagree. If it would have come back at 3,500, the city wouldn't have agreed, yeah.
It wouldn't have mattered how much more than 4,700 that. It wouldn't have mattered how much more than 4,700 that second to final number was.
Right.
Wouldn't have mattered if it was 10,000, 20,000, 6,000.
Well, I, I don't know that it, if it was 20,000, it may have made a difference. But I, you know, this is something what, that, we are partners with the city, they are collecting this. We can't go over and mandate that they collect this. This is, this is something that we have to agree upon that works for both of us. And I think that's where we've, that's where we are now at 4,700, or that's what it's been, right?
Yes.
We're pretty close to that, they collect 4,700, it looks like, and that's what we're recommending again as we stay at that number.
Correct.
The difference is, is we would be able to defend our point of view about mitigating the impact of the developments by saying, this is what the calculations really show, and the city wouldn't approve that. So, I mean, not to pit us against each other, we're all on the same team, but the fact is that we are coming at this from different points of view. And so, they can say, well, we know that the numbers showed you needed $9,000, and we only accepted 4,700. So then when someone comes to us and says, what are you guys doing about overcrowding? We can say, well, we tried to actually address the true impact of the growth in our city, and it wasn't agreed upon, whereas if we just kind of say, oh, okay, well, let's just do this, and then see where, that's harder to defend, because then we've just agreed to a much lesser mitigation of the true impact of what is happening in our city and what's been happening for 15 years.
Okay, but I don't exactly, I don't really blame it on the city. I'm, I'm, you know, it's the builders, the contractors, and they're the ones that raise the biggest stink or the fight, and they're the ones that come and do the biggest about the impact fees.
No, I'm not blaming anyone, I'm just saying we each come at this from different points of view. And so, I remember very distinctly, two years ago, I was a new board member, and we had people from the home builders, at least one, someone from the homeowners association, essentially come and threaten us, not in a violent way, but, well, don't do that, you're not gonna have homes built, they're gonna, the rate's gonna go down. And, and so, we kept it the same, and low and behold, what happened the year after? We had the highest growth in the state. Wait, I thought we were gonna, people were gonna stop building houses with the impact fees, that didn't happen. That was what we were threatened, like, if you try to seek more money, you know, you're, you're not gonna grow as much, and you're not gonna have as much of a tax base, and, and watch out, you're, you know, you've been growing a lot, but you can't keep that up. And then what happens the next year? We grew the most of any city in the state. At least, that's what it says in Tri-City Hall. So, again, everyone comes at it from a different point of view, and like you said, Ms. Lankin, everyone has their reasons, and who's gonna be the most biased when it comes to something like this, okay? Someone that's trying to do what's, what we know the impact on our students and their experience, and what's happening in our city, or someone that's, you know, representing home builders, right? So who, who's gonna have a bias there? And so, again, I'm not blaming the city, I'm just saying that from our standpoint, we need to come with the information that helps show our true need and what's truly happening, because we have all these new city council members, and some of them may not understand that this is what is happening in our schools. And if they see the numbers based on the calculations with, without not counting portables, well, then that paints a, paints a much rosier picture than what is truly happening. And then we have a much harder time communicating that, because they don't understand the details that we've just reviewed about why that's important, and why that doesn't accurately demonstrate what's truly happening with our students in our schools.
So, do you have more to present?
Just a couple more, and then I'll wrap. And this kind of goes to, what does it look like across the state in terms of fee collection? So first of all, Pasco School District is really the only school district on the east side collecting school impact fees. There have been a couple of other districts who at various times have tried to do so. But what this chart shows is that where the state median and state averages, and so when you think of state, this is primarily western Washington school districts, and you'll see that there is, in every case, at least some discount applied. Some footnotes to these numbers, just to keep in mind, there are many jurisdictions that have automatic discounts like your city, but most of them are 55-0% off of the calculated fee. So these numbers don't reflect the true calculated cost, they reflect the discounted fee. There are also some numbers in here where a school district, right now, has a capital facilities plan, and these are very few that are in here. A school district has a capital facilities plan, but at the present time, they're not collecting a fee, so they have a zero fee. But essentially, what this shows is where you fit under these proposed fees within the state. And then, just next steps, really quick, the board approval is anticipated on May 8. There's a City of Pasco workshop on May 14 with approval scheduled for consideration on May 21. And then again, a request will be made to Franklin County for purposes of their consideration of the capital facilities plan and a school impact fee ordinance.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Any comments, questions by the board? Sarah, did you have anything to follow on to that? Well, so just to be clear, the recommended numbers there are 4,700 for a single-family home, and then, I don't remember what the other one was, 40? Yeah, it was a little less than that for multifamily.
Right, the city would collect 4,700, so we'd receive 4,683 for a single-family, and then the multi-unit, multifamily unit would be 4,525, is, is the recommendation. And as Denise pointed out, we are in a position, really, to, over the next two years, revisit this plan in light of the work that we do with our long-term facilities planning. So I wouldn't, I would anticipate a significant revision to this in two years, based on both the board feedback, work that the city is doing, and, and that long-term facilities planning.
And we'll have a better idea at that point, what the projected growth is, we'll see what these new developments do to us.
Absolutely.
Can you go up a slide? Or down, maybe it's down a slide, right there, thank you. So here's, here's where we are, there's all the calculations for those who are interested, and the recommendation, I believe we will be back here in two weeks with the intent of approving these, or these are the recommended numbers, and these are the numbers that we would approve unless somebody has discussion otherwise.
So can I, just for my own, so Sarah, if I understand correctly, we heard the conversation around permanent portables in part of the calculation process. Because this is a two-year update, that kind of major change and revision to the calculation would be more appropriate in the six-year reevaluation of the plan versus doing that now? Is that, was that my understanding?
That, that is, that is part of it, absolutely. The body of the plan, the, the text of the plan, and I believe we, we did send that to you as well, the multi-page document, does reference our intention to no longer rely on portables as part of that permanent capacity calculation. We had done that previously, so the plan does state the intent to, to move away from that. But the, the overall calculation, for us to be able to demonstrate that we are indeed meeting the need, which is a requirement of the capital facilities plan overall, by necessity has to incorporate the, the calculation of the portables at this time.
Anyone able to find the elementary enrollment in October 2016? I wanna say it was like, we grew 2 to 300, I don't remember the exact number, though. Just the elementary, is that broken out, I just wanted the elementary? Yeah.
Yeah, see, you guys did the same thing I did, I was on my phone and got it, I was so proud of myself when it was wrong number.
I wanna say it was about 300, but I, I mean, I hate to just throw out a number, but it, just elementary. If anyone can find, you know, 'cause, anyways. But no, I have many objections, but if anyone else wants to talk, I've talked a lot, I, but no, I'm not done discussing this.
I don't want this forecast, we're looking at the previous.
The previous, okay.
Are the capacity equations we talked to, we're gonna, we're gonna approve those or adopt those two weeks from now? Is that what you said?
So, as, as included in the capital facilities plan, yes. This, these, let me just get to them, Scott. The enrollment projections and capacity by grade span would be, no, those are the enrollment projections, my bad. Sorry, way at the beginning. Those. Correct?
So, I'm gonna try and keep it really high level. There, there's two high-level things in here that I don't think, at this point, I support. So, the starting point for a high school number is 25, per this calculation that we're going with now. The only requirement, and I brought this up last time, the only requirement that we currently have is the teacher's contract at 30, 30 students per classroom at the high school level. We've, I don't wanna say, we've kind of arbitrarily selected 25, which is the non-poverty number from the state that is not enforceable at this time. But all of our high schools are at the 23 level, okay. So we're, we're kind of over-providing at the high school level in this calculation at this point. The next part is at the elementary school level, we have poverty heist, poverty elementary schools with K to 3 classes, where the state has an enforceable recommendation of 15 kids per classroom, and we're starting with a baseline that's higher than that at, at 17, or whatever the weighted average is there. So, we're artificially lowering the high school number, we're artificially raising those poverty schools number, acceptable number, when the state says it should be 15, and this is the only enforceable thing you have right now is K3 at 15. And we're artificially raising that. So I'm just worried that we're skewing where our need is by doing these things the way we're doing it. I have concern about that still.
So I think what we need, if we can get the classroom count for each building, and we can get the numbers, we're gonna plug in for elementary, general light classrooms, this. I mean, if we can see that sheet for each school, that would be wonderful, and I think that will help, help us understand a little better. Now, there may still be some discussion after that, because it, I mean, if you just take those numbers, that, that enrollment or that capacity divided by those classrooms, it looks considerably lower than the number we used. That is a result of the scheduling factor. But I think what, what Mr. Larriman is looking for is that, how did we get to that number? And I think if we have that information, then we can?
Well, then it's that, and then also think about, we as a board have arbitrarily, the majority, given direction to set the high school limit at 25, which is, when you say 30s are our minimum contract required right now, nothing through the state. We've just reduced our capacity by almost 25% at the, at the high school level. And when we as a board say, well, don't worry about that enforceable K3 limit of 15 per classroom, we're gonna set that starting point at 17, we've just raised that. So when we go through this whole thing, and we go through all these calc's, and we say, high school's where it's gonna be at in the future, that's where our problem's gonna be at. Well, you change those numbers to 30 as a starting point for high school, and for our poverty schools, start them at 15, I think the analysis looks different.
Certainly it will.
But I respectfully need to push back a little bit on that framing of the issue, because the, first, the direction that we got from the board was around finding a common, common standard that we could apply to all the buildings, so that we weren't using a different multiplier for the elementary versus a different multiplier for the high school. I believe, from my understanding of the board's discussion, that's where you came to agreement on the weighted average moving forward. So, so that was?
It's not the weighted average part, and I brought this up at the last thing, is I have an issue with starting the high school at 25 versus the contract minimum, which is the only enforceable thing we have right now at 30. And I also have an issue, if most of our schools are poverty, we wanna start from the same spot, then call them all poverty, if that's the way we wanna do it. But we're calling them all non-poverty, which is overly optimistic at the elementary school level, and that's the enforceable thing that we have, is K3 at 15. So, I, I'm on the same page as you, we wanna set something in the standard. I'm just bringing up the same points I brought up last time. If the majority of the board wants to go forward with it, that's fine, but I believe that we're artificially showing more need at the high school level in an unenforceable recommended number that may be enforceable someday versus the need of 15 students in K3, which is an enforceable set point from the state, so.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Lamm with what you're saying, and I, and that, I see the, the point you're making with the difference, and I'd be fine to classify both of them as, as poverty, like, if we wanna keep it consistent. But that difference is nowhere near the difference as not counting the portables. I mean, that, we're talking, you know, exponential difference of the numbers and the calculations from 23 to 25 at the high school level and 15 to 17 in elementary school, because we're talking about thousands of students. So, no, I, I'm, if you, if we all agree to set that number at the poverty level, I think that's fine. And again, I, we have to be careful with what we're talking about to use terms like acceptable number, and we're setting a limit, or we're not setting a limit appropriately. The, the capacity isn't any of those things, it doesn't have anything to do with the contract, it doesn't have anything to do with laws, it's just trying to define consistently, consistently the capacity of a building. And so, we, we weren't, we agreed to do it at the non-poverty level, but if we're gonna change that, then I, I agree, it needs to all be at the poverty level. Like, it should be a consistent measurement, but that, that doesn't bind us to anything, but I agree.
It doesn't bind us.
If we, the way that we communicate that has an effect, and that's what?
On how people analyze where our need is.
And that's why, that's my whole point about the portables, the effect is just so much different. I mean, it's dramatic if you don't count the portables, which is what we're doing. And it doesn't express, it doesn't really demonstrate what our need is.
Yeah, one point of clarification on what I'm saying is, I believe we should go with the poverty level at elementaries, because there's an enforceable law for K3, but I don't believe that we should go with poverty at the high school, because there is nothing enforceable under state law at this time. The only thing we have is a contract limit, so I'm saying, you look at that, and you say, right now, the contract limit's 30, so that's our starting point. And I was, I was telling Ms. Whitney this earlier, I was saying, think of a business. You, you design your, you design some meeting room or some room for 100 people, and the fire department come in, comes in and says, nope, your limit there is 90 people per, per this room here. And some other state law comes in and says, no, it's 80. So what's our starting point? To me, it should be 80, because that's enforceable. If we did, if the, if the state said, we recommend you should have 80, but you don't really need to, and the fire department said 90's the limit, then 90's our limit. So I'm, I'm, I'm just pointing out the difference in elementary K3 versus high school here, and that I don't think it should be 23 at the high school, I think our starting point should be 30.
Yeah, and Scott, I think we already had this discussion two, three weeks ago, and I agree 100% with you, and I still agree with you. But as a board, we were already outvoted on this point, and so I'm okay with moving forward with what we have. Oh, I thought it was, I thought there was, well, I thought there was three of us, three that wanted to go very specific and the same, and, and you and I both wanted to make that different, because it wasn't a current law. But, but I, we've already had this. The one thing I did want to put that I feel like is good?
Is it related to impact fees, or is it related to capacity?
No, it's related to this.
Okay.
Well, I really appreciate the fact that we have to deal with the need at present, with our present portables, whatever. And so I think that's why the numbers look the way they do, and they, and they might not be accurate. I don't mind putting the number in brick and mortar next to it, but right now, we have to address our current need as it stands at this moment in our high schools, in our, excuse me, in all of our schools. But in the future, we are going to deal with trying to get rid of these portables. Right now, we can't, we just have to deal with present need. So I think it's really important for us to understand that. If we wanna have those numbers there, so we get an accurate account of how really overcapacity we are, great. But we still have to deal with our current re-need, so I think we should go forward with the current numbers.
But the issue is that this, this is a current need, that, that's the whole point, that this is our true situation right now. And also, we are deciding what we're gonna, the direction we're gonna take over the next couple of years. So if we don't, at some point, we have to say, this is the need, and we have to make decisions that are gonna be carried forward over the next couple of years, because two- are going to be carried forward over the next couple of years. Because two years ago, we had the same discussion. And I thought that the need demonstrated that we need a higher amount. And we said, "Well, let's wait two years. We don't want to do a change right now." And now that's essentially what we're saying right now, just keep it the same. And I mean, it's not even, even for inflation, it should go up a little bit. And we just have kept it the same because we're not counting the true need. And that's my issue. We're not demonstrating what our true current need is right now. And at some point, we have to both do that and plan the changes going forward.
So, so what we're trying to get to right now is something we can take to the city next, in May, and say, "This is what we would like you to get or collect for impact fees." Right? I mean, that's the long and the short of it. So, going back 2005 timeframe, our district was growing incredibly. We had far more than we were building. And at that point, the, I mean, it took us six years. Was it 2011 when we finally got the impact fees? So, maybe it was 12. Six years, seven years, to get something to help, to get some relief. Now, I believe we are keeping pace with our bonds. We're keeping pace with growth. To go back now and say that we need additional impact fee, I think is, to me, is not the right approach to take. I think the city's been good partners with us. We, we can go back to them. I don't see any reason that they should not continue at this rate. Certainly, by the formulas, we could collect up to 7,000 approximately, maybe a little more. But we could also collect zero. So I think if we, and we're a little over the, a little above the midpoint there, so, and it helps. So I think until we, if we saw a huge growth spurt, I think we would be justified in going back and saying, "Look, we need to revisit this and maybe get it, increase it a little bit." But I'm perfectly fine with going back with, going back to the city and just renewing the continued impact fee that we've got.
So, not to go into the growth projections too much, but that's something I wanted to point out as well, that one year before, the MGT said that, "In the upcoming year, we're going to decrease by 50 students at the elementary level." And that's like the year before. And we went up by, it looks like the numbers we found, maybe 100. So we were off by 150 the year before, like, just within a year of, okay, next year, what are we going to look like? We were off by 150. So if you apply, thank you for bringing this up. If you apply that to this, that maybe we're plus or minus 150, 200 every year, it could look dramatically different, especially if this 5,000 to 8,000 home development by Road 100, you know, starts progressing. So, I just, I think the projections have gotten a little better over the last 10 years, but we're still dramatically under projecting growth, which is extremely frustrating. So in summary, I know we're running out of time. The changes I would like to see is, I'd like to calculate the numbers based without counting portables. If we're not in favor of that, my second proposal would be that we use the 7,000 or whatever, not take off the 25%, although if we calculate it without the portables, we could take off 50%, you know? And then we would be more in line with the other districts, which I highly doubt have the portable inventory that we have. And so thus, they're able to have different calculations. So I'd like to see those two changes. And I would also like to add some projects to the list, so that if we have those changes, we could have enough money in a couple of years to actually build a permanent building, like a non-traditional high school, like New Horizons, and actually meet the equity needs of the high school students we're not serving currently. It would make a small dent in the numbers, but it's more to addressing what we've discussed before, is equity and providing the students the, what they need. And that's equity. And we're not doing that for hundreds of our high school students right now by having them all into large, traditional high schools.
What was the highest impact fee that any place in the state charges?
The highest impact fee right now is just over 11,000, the Lake Washington School District. And that's discounted by 50%. That is based upon their 2016 behind projects. I will note that their student generation rate number is higher than this district's. And so that's a big driver of that fee. They have a lot of students coming out of single-family homes in their district.
Plus, their land values are four times what ours are.
And their construction costs are significantly higher.
I can't believe they're generating more kids out of one home than we are. Holy cow. That's amazing.
Okay. Sherri, do you have any input?
I think that we ought to leave it the same. I'm in agreement with you as far as impact fees, because we've had a good relationship with the city and...
Yeah. Scott, any, anything else to say?
I would support either one. I'd support 4,700 or 57, whatever that number is. And I guess I would think we should have a, or whoever goes and talks to him, should have a, is it the city council they're going to go talk to? Should start off, I mean, we have open public meetings here, so we don't really have a good negotiating situation here. But if they, if the majority of the new city council members agree that it's fair to charge the higher impact fee, and they would support it, I'm all for asking them for it and supporting it. But I don't want to wreck relationships by doing it. So I support it either way.
Our multifamily homes are already higher than most of the state averages. And I think that's really a tough number right there. If we did anything, I'd want to reduce that and increase the single-family home dwelling, because that's a lot for, for a, anyway, somebody to take on. But it sounds like we can renegotiate in two years. And I think that sounds like a really good idea. And, and I think, from everything I've learned from around the state, not just this time, but in previous times, we already ask more than most give. And so I think it's important to, to just be wise stewards of what we have and use what we have right now.
Just comment on the, you know, this, this isn't about a relationship with the city. This is about our students. That's who we're here to represent, not to defend some relationship with the city. We're trying to show what's best for our community. The other thing is the fees, they're incorporated into the cost of the housing. So the housing in our community compared to the other local communities is less. That's why we continue to have huge growth in houses and the number of people that move in. There's supply and demand is there. And we continue to have large numbers of families moving into our community. So that's not, it's in no way turning off, we have to just incorporate it into the cost of housing, not just look at this independent of that. One of the main objections that someone sent me two years ago was that, well, you know, "Did you know that someone that wants to add in addition to their home has to pay the impact fee?" And to me, that's silly. We can just exempt them from the law. If you live in the city and you're going to add on a mother's and mother-in-law suite or whatever, you can be exempt from this. This is for new housing development, not in addition to your home. So I, to me, that was a, not much of an argument. We can just exempt those people. But we're trying to capture the impact of new families coming to the community.
Okay. So I know Dr. Rich doesn't ask for some more information. I'm not, I'm not in favor of going through those gyrations at this point. So I don't know if you're required to go do that. Are you, to go, so he's made a request to go figure it out without portables and to look at another, another, what was your other scenario there, Dr. Richardson?
Or like Mr. Lerman said, to just go with the, not take off such an amount, go with that, without the discount. That would be easier, obviously. But then I'd like to add some projects so that we have more flexibility. They, as was stated, we want that to be expansive as possible, just to, because if it's not on that, we can't do it. So I'd like to at least add a small, non-traditional high school to that list, so that that would be, at least be an option. If we were able to save up impact fees over three years, we could build another Delta-like school in our community. And if it's not on that list, then we can't do it.
So I think this list is good for two years. We can certainly revisit and adjust this list in two years. I, we've got this discussion coming up with our long-range facilities planning, and we can add that to it. I don't know that there's any need to add that in to this one, because we're not going to do it in the next two years.
Why not? We haven't discussed it. I think we should. I think we should do it right now.
There wouldn't be, so for purposes of the project page, there wouldn't be harm in adding it to the future, the list of ideas for the future. I think that that's where it would fit. We couldn't incorporate it into the, anything that we could do between now and 2023, because realistically, we wouldn't be able to, to complete that project. But for future bond projects, adding it potentially there, there's no downside to doing that.
Okay.
Because those will change over time anyway.
I don't think we should say a Delta-like school. I think we should say a small high school, because I think that would be something that the community, if we did something like that, that they would need to decide, because there's more things than just Delta that they can make, like a trade school, something that's more like that. So I wouldn't...
I agree. I would leave it open.
Yeah.
But a future, but a future school, I'm willing to look at it, but I'm not willing to commit to it.
No. And this is, this, yeah, this is, this is a working list of projects. What, what we're committed to is what we have coming up between now and 2023.
Okay. So, it would be different than new high school number three? Does it have to have a capacity number and all that information?
No. We could, we could simply add it to the list. These are in no particular priority order.
Right. I'm just saying, okay, that'll work. If you need to add a new line, or new line number, the new high school number three covers that, then I would expect we're covered. But whether it's an 1,800-student high school or a 200-student high school, if we need two-line items to identify those and add two-line items.
Please add another line.
So...
I'm happy with Ms. Phillips, non-traditional, small high, or just small high school, put 200 to 300, whatever, or you can say NA, 10 million. I mean, these are just, none of this holds you to anything. You're just saying that it's a potential project.
Okay. So, we are going to vote next, next time on whether we move forward with this or any modifications to it? Okay. Thank you. Does that wrap this up?
And we'll table the boundary discussion.
We'll have the boundary discussion some other time. And we will reconvene at 6:30 for regular board meeting. Thank you, Susana, for being ready. Dr. Reyes.